All right, so I'll call to order the planning commission meeting for June 25th, 2020. You can start with a roll call.
Okay.
Van Meter.
Could be Mike on that 312 phone.
He muted, does he have to push back?
We'll come back to him. McPollin?
Here.
Casper?
Here.
Lassity?
Here.
Peterson? Okay, we'll come back. Crawford? Yes, I see you, Mr. Crawford.
You're muted, Rich. Hello, is that better?
Thank you.
Okay.
Fox? Van Meter?
Here.
And Peterson? No Peterson.
Six out of seven, Ben.
That's good.
Okay, we have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. Cindy, do you want to give them the explanation for that?
Sure.
Meeting we all missed, except Stephanie?
Yeah, it looks like a very short meeting.
Meeting, yeah.
The reason there were two meetings is because when I was writing the notice for the paper, I was doing it from home. And for some reason, I had the 15th stuck in my head instead of the real date that it was. So it got published that way. So instead of not honoring our meeting schedule or our posting, Stephanie and I met and there was not a quorum. So we postponed the meeting until... What day was it?
The 21st, I think, wasn't it? Yes.
Yeah, May 23rd.
May 21st.
I do see I skipped the approval of the agenda. Is it important that we do this in order?
I actually took it off of our check sheet, so it's up to you.
I guess we can follow it. We just need a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written.
So moved. A second.
Okay, that was...
Make the motion. Kate?
McPollin.
And...
And Casper.
Yeah, Casper's second.
Okay, so let's call the roll. McPollin?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yes.
Lassity?
Yes.
Agenda approved.
All right, now we can get to those meetings. So does anyone want to make a motion to approve that first very short meeting? From May 15th?
Yeah, so moved.
And then you should, Stephanie, you're the only one who was there.
Well, that's a point.
Say, Marcia.
I said, "That's a good point."
Okay, I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the very short meeting on May 15th. So I have a second.
I'll second it.
Who made the second?
All the people who weren't at the meeting.
Okay. All right, I'll call the roll. Casper?
Yes.
Lassity?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yes.
McPollin?
Yes.
Crawford?
I'll take your word for it.
Fox?
Same here, yes.
Okay. We have, the motion carries.
So we have a motion to approve the minutes of our actual meeting on May 21st where we were all there?
I have, I have one minor amendment or change.
Yep.
On the item eight adjournment. You should strike chairperson, Casper.
Oh.
Unless I was promoted somehow, I don't know.
Lucky.
Okay, I will do that.
All right, any other changes we should make before we make a motion?
I move we approve the minutes. This is McPollin talking.
Van Meter, yes. Get the board a second.
Okay, I will call the roll. Van Meter?
Yes.
McPollin?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Lassity?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next on the agenda is the public comment section. Do we have anybody joining the call that isn't our council or commission?
I don't see anybody.
Okay, so we'll skip the public comment. Is that okay to skip, Cindy?
No, we can, we should still open it to public comment and then if nobody speaks, we'll close it.
Okay, so we'll open the public comment portion now and just state your name and where you live and limit your comments to three minutes. Okay. Hearing none, we'll close the public comment section and we'll move on to old business. Now, we're going to, do you explain this or do you want me to, Cindy?
You can go ahead and explain that.
Okay, we're just going to remove from the table the additional talking points on the downtown permitted in special land use items. We didn't quite get through the whole list and so that's what we're doing tonight, right, Cindy? We're pulling the rest of those items off of that chart and going through them.
And I had the chart here just a minute ago. Huh, that is strange. That's the right file. See if I have another format. Sorry, sorry, it's my first time doing this.
Cindy, we're, our packet is called binder three, if that makes a difference.
Yeah, this is binder three.
It says binder one.
Oh.
Let me check, see that.
Yeah, because I made a new binder for this presentation, but I can still get it here, I think. That's why I made it into binder one. Okay, we can see it. Can you see it?
No.
No.
Might have to stir it.
Do you have your printed copies or your emailed copies?
I do.
Yeah, I am happy.
It's gonna be pretty easy to go through this.
Yeah.
We talked about domestic and business repairs. I would kind of like to save that one for last. And kind of a no-brainer one is the home occupations in Water Street East to, they're currently not permitted and open that up to allow by right. Is...
Yeah, I...
If we do them one at a time, it will be easier, I think.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so regarding home occupations for Water Street East. I believe, at least in the copy, I think it was left out of permitted use.
Mm-hmm.
And so if we, we talked about changing that by right so that we're consistent in all of the, all of the districts there.
That's, the chart shows that, right? I'm reading it.
She's proposing moving the not permitted to right on the potential side of the card.
In the blue, right, the second blue.
Yeah, the second blue one. That one just seems to make sense. They're allowed in all residential zone districts. They're, you might be making jewelry or you might be running a auditing business that you work from home and get emails and prepare documents.
And there's just no thought, we can't come up with any reason that might have been that way originally?
I can't. I think probably when the zone districts got split up from one big commercial zone district into four distinct zone districts. It, um... It just got left out for some reason.
An oversight more than anything.
Mm-hmm.
Does anybody have any objection to making it a right?
I don't.
Okay, that seems like a fairly easy one. Do we need to discuss that one anymore or are we...
I'm agreed.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
Cindy, do you want us to make motions on each certain one as we're going through them? Would you want us to wait till the end or...
I think I'd rather do it one at a time, if you don't mind.
As we're talking about them, but instead of pushing it all through?
Yes, as we're talking about them and then we don't have to go back and amend and it'll just be easier for when I prepare the minutes and when I change the, the actual ordinance to get it to the attorney's office.
Okay, and this is, this is Kate McPollin. I move we allow home occupations in Water Street East by right.
Okay.
Second.
That was Marcia?
Stephanie.
There was Stephanie.
Stephanie. Okay, any discussion? Then I'll call the roll. McPollin?
Yes.
Lassity? Lassity?
Yes.
Yes. Um, Van Meter?
Yes.
Uh... Casper?
Yes.
Um, Crawford?
Yes.
And Fox?
Yes.
Motion carries. We could move on to maybe motion picture facility.
Should we go back, shouldn't we go back and do the domestic and...
I want to save that one till the last.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry. Motion picture facility has been changed in your red line document to theater.
Theater.
And I just need you to help me decide if you want to do them as a special land use or permitted by right or... And why they're not permitted in Water Street North.
What are your thoughts, Cindy? Do you see any reason that it should be a special land use?
I really don't, but...
So if they're not...
Yeah, I don't.
Land use, then we are saying we would just go by right or are we saying we'd like to open it up for something like that in the future or not permitted to all of them? We talked about this a lot last time. I can't remember exactly where we fell, but I thought it might be a kind of a neat idea to let that be open to people's innovation.
I think we all agreed we would like to see them. I'm assuming Cindy's question is, are they allowed by right?
Yeah, or special land use.
Yeah.
I think given the range of things that could fall under theater, special land use makes sense. I mean, you know, it could be a, you know, one of these, I don't know, strange, you know, 10-person live theater things or it could be whatever, 150 people, which brings traffic and crowds and all the rest of it. So I mean, it'd be nice to look at those one at a time, assuming we, any of us ever sees an application.
And Cindy, do we have, we don't have a definition yet, do we?
Later.
Yeah.
Sorry. Is your question, do we have a definition for theater?
Yeah, I don't think we do. We don't.
We don't.
I mean, we have motion picture facility if we wanted this new word theater to only mean a motion picture facility, but we had all talked about it encompassing other...
But it could be like for live events, yeah.
Probably, thank you for pointing that out. We could table that one until, until we get a good definition.
Well, how much better a definition do we need than theater if we have, for example, restaurants or home occupations, which are broad?
We have definitions of them.
They're all defined.
Let me look it up, what it says, definition of motion picture facility.
It just says a commercial operation that offers the viewing of movies to the public for compensation. So it's a little limiting compared to what we had talked about.
Yeah, otherwise we could add that to the motion and say to add the definition of theater as... A motion...
Is it two?
The same as the motion picture definition, which is motion picture facility or theater. Or we could just change the word motion picture facility to theater, a commercial operation that offers the viewing of movies or live performances.
That sounds concise.
I think it's broad.
Add the words live performances to the definition and change the definition name from motion picture to theater.
Can I ask you one question, everybody? What do you think about the idea of the theater belonging in Water Street North? Since that's such like a water kind of district with its boats, older boat, the retro boat. Do you think there's any merit to maybe keeping it out of Water Street North since it's such a small district? And we've kind of said that's the place where boats go and...
It's also residential.
Yeah, I mean, I know it contains retail and commercial use. It says it right in the general description, but it's such a small district and it does kind of seem like that's where we put all our commercial chartering and stuff like that and those can't be anywhere else. So I'm just throwing it out there for conversation.
I'm fine with that.
Any objection, any reason we wouldn't want to do that?
I mean, if somebody really wants to put something there that we're not thinking of now, they could always petition to change the ordinance.
True.
So I don't have a problem with it.
No other feedback on that? I, I'm not really one that likes to limit without a really good reason, so I wasn't sure if that was a real good reason. Was wanting you guys to chime in on that.
So what I'm hearing, I think, is not permitted in Water Street North and permitted by special land use in the other zones.
I'm not, I'm not wedded to the idea. I just was, you know, fleshing out how small and unique the North District is. Either is the right thing for that very small place.
Which may have been the thinking for why it's set up the way it is now, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that too. And I mean, I agree if, if there is, if there's a point in time and someone has an idea and they want to see about having it changed, they could...
Okay, so we're gonna keep that the way it is, not permitted.
Yep, just change the name.
Right.
All right.
Easy.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
I move we change the definition of motion picture facility. Can I just say as discussed? And I guess that's it. We don't really need to change.
Change the definition of motion picture facility to theater and add live performance to the definition.
Exactly.
That's the motion?
That's what I just said, yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Go ahead, sorry, I'm not alone.
Sorry, I'm stepping on Stephanie's toes again, but...
My, my topic was unrelated. I forgot we had the rest of this.
Okay, I'll call the roll. McPollin?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yes.
And Lassity?
Yes.
Motion carries. And we can move on to restaurants.
This is where I was gonna make my question. It's back up at the B and B. And maybe we went over it before and I didn't remember it, but why are we not permitting those in Water Street East again? Okay.
I, I think they're all smaller buildings and smaller parcels of land and that might be thinking behind that.
Isn't Ivy Inn in Water Street East?
I think it's in Water Street North.
Is it?
Uh, it's right next to Wicks.
So is that on?
It's 421?
In the green, wouldn't it, water? Because it's those condos that would be at the south end of Water Street North, right?
Yeah, I think it said like close to Mary and...
You're right, Ivy Inn is right there. What do you think, Cindy? Do we already have? Is it, is it technically a B and B?
Ivy Inn is, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's called an inn. Maybe it's under Hotel Inn slash inn right underneath because of it's...
Maybe, but then why would we not allow a B and B of hotels?
Because the, the definition of Water Street East is, you know, when the residential flavor, flavor while promoting martial land use and development. And I would guess a B and B is a great mix of the two of those. It feels residential and yet it's commercial.
It is, Ivy Inn is in the Water Street East.
Okay, so I guess...
Change it to SLU?
Yeah, I would.
I think it makes a lot of sense with the definition of that district. What, anybody have an objection to that?
No, that's a good catch.
All right, should we, anybody want to make a motion to make that change on B and Bs and Water Street East?
Yeah.
I'll move that we change it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make, I'll make the motion to make B and Bs is special land use for Water Street East.
You have a second?
Second.
I'll second. Oh, go ahead, Dan, for Mike.
Any more discussion?
Any discussion?
I'll call the roll. Casper?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Lassity?
Yes.
McPollin? Kate?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yes.
Motion carries. That was a good catch. Restaurants?
Yeah, I believe this one we were talking about changing so we're consistent across in making it all special land use.
That's what I recall and that's what I put in the red line document.
Yeah.
And refresh the thinking in that.
It was for like, so, you know, like the hours of operation and lightings, you know, signage.
Trash music.
So there's some of that, yeah. Noise, yeah, control.
You know, I think we really learned that when we went through the retro again, when they came back that second time. We were very thorough with all of those sorts of small details that kind of taught me that there's a lot of value in that. Because, you know, it's just good. So are there any objections to making it special land use across the board?
And make a motion.
Okay, you want to make that motion, Dan?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we make under the heading of restaurants, special land use specified for each of the four shown zoning districts.
You have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike? Discussion? I'll call the roll. Fox? Fox?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yes.
McPollin? McPollin, I can't hear you.
She's muted.
Yes, I got disconnected.
Casper?
Yes.
Lassity?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries. So amusement and recreation services. Currently permitted as a special land use in Water Street East. Is that appropriate or not?
Didn't we, didn't we talk about this last time?
We talked about it, but we didn't take any action.
Committed in two of the four districts, right, Cindy?
Yep.
You stand south.
Yeah, and, and I think like this included like the climbing walls and I think I've seen bungee jumping setups there before. Near...
Oh, Coral Gables.
Gables, yeah.
It's such a broad category. What are you gonna say, Kate?
Uh, never mind.
What do we say? Cindy, is there something you are, you're, you're wanting to have us reconsider or think differently about on these designations?
Well, amusement and recreation services is a commercial operation that offers rides, games, entertainment or similar activities to patrons for compensation. Typically, they're outside, like at Coral Gables climbing wall.
And they need space and I...
They need space.
Right.
East is a little bit dense probably for a lot of what's in that definition. Is that, is that what you're getting at there?
Mm-hmm.
I could see too in Water Street East, for example, you know, the area to the right as you look at it south, I guess, of the mitten, you know, they've got a half of a lot there or whatever that they use for outdoor eating and dining, whatever. But in part of it, they had like a Zynga tower and other things, which of course they don't charge for. But conceivably, someone could create such a business in such a space and it'd be perfectly fine. And I mean by special land use, not unreasonable and that's allowed as it is set up right now, so.
Would that include like, you know, maybe they wouldn't charge a penny and maybe a nickel, but like those penny, you know, pony ride? You know, or mechanical ponies or whatever, would that fall in that?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I guess I don't have any major objection to it.
I mean, it also concerns that property north of Wicks Park that was Lucy's outdoor area. Remember, two years ago, whatever.
Yep.
That easily could be, someone could conceive of using that area in that fashion.
If the grilled cheese business doesn't... Those are good grilled cheese butter. I don't know if any of you have them, but they're fine. I like the idea personally of keeping them as a special land use so we're open to ideas. We're not, we're not foreclosing on the idea before it's even presented to us. I'm trying to think of a reason why you'd say just no flat out and I, I think it would happen.
I mean, I'm assuming that any business, you know, that was setting that up, whoever was leasing the land or owns the land, that they would have the liability if there were any kind of injuries. You know, someone fell off the bungee or it failed. I mean, is there, is there any kind of, I guess, liability issue for the city of Sagatuck?
Mm-mm, that would be private.
Okay.
And it would be a special land use, so we would be reviewing.
Yeah, that could be part of it, yeah, that they have to have liability.
I think it's, you know, that's one of the things that a lot of people have been saying, some of whom have come and spoken, maybe even Retro Boats. They were saying that, you know, people are asking for things to do downtown, you know, not just go to restaurants and shop. And that's why Retro Boats has been so successful. I think that was part of their pitch a while back, if I remember. So I like the idea, amusement and recreation services is kind of a fresh thing that would give people something different to do. If the right idea came along and they could make it work.
Right. Right.
Although to be fair, in all the time I've been on this, no one's ever come in with a an application for such a business.
You'd probably have to solve alcohol to make it work, and then that would be dangerous. Well, so what are we thinking? Do we wanna leave it open at least for the potential that it could bring? Leave it the way it is with the special land use in the two areas, or do we wanna make any changes?
If you leave it the way it is, there's no more, correct?
Correct, if you don't change anything, I don't need a motion.
Let's do that then.
Yeah.
I think we just leave it.
Okay.
Just kidding, just kidding.
It can always be changed, but you can always revisit it if, if, if it's needed.
Right.
Okay.
All right. I think that brings us back to the domestic and business repair services. Is a very odd definition. Person or persons repair and or restore equipment or similar items which are not intended for resale on the premises shall not include the repair of automobiles or motorized vehicles. And that would be as a principal use, not a, not an accessory use. For example, you could have a bike shop that sold bikes and repaired bikes. And that would not be a problem, cause that would be an accessory use.
Meaning the bike shop would be allowed. Go ahead Mike.
Would that same logic apply to somebody who wanted to set up a computer repair store? If they were selling computers, could they do the repair work also?
If their main business was selling computers, they could, um, do repair as an accessory use.
Well then, can I ask, if that doesn't bother anybody, why would we not allow strictly a computer repair store or strictly a bike repair store? I could see maybe not city center, but in the other districts, is there an objection to?
Well, those would be covered as retail stores, correct?
Well, now, let's say they weren't selling computers or bikes for whatever reason, and all they were doing was repair.
Oh. But you, you're saying that would still be covered as a retail store?
No, the domestic and business repair that we're, weren't talking about, if all it did was.
The old definition prior to the amendment in 2014 was, um, just had some more descriptions in it, such as small appliances, gun repair, um, leather repair. It was just kind of archaic, yeah, like hat mending.
Right.
Horseshoes. Horseshoe.
Whip repair.
I guess my question is, is there a reason to not allow that?
Well, I think.
I don't think so, I think it keeps it open.
The question then becomes how you define that, because if computer repair and automobile repair are somehow allowed under that definition, I think there may be an issue there, I mean.
Well, the definition.
Go ahead.
The definition does not include repair of automobile or motorized vehicles. But to your point Dan, and we could make it a special land use, since it's such a broad definition, we might want to review and see what people are gonna do, what they're gonna do about waste. I mean, there could be issues depending on what kind of repair it is, I guess.
I like, I like that idea because the category is potentially so broad.
Yeah.
In other words, just make it into a special land use across all four zones or just a couple of zones?
I would be inclined to say not city center. I don't know that we want a repair shop on Butler Street, but maybe it would be okay in the other zones.
People walk in with their toasters to get.
Their horseshoes.
Their horseshoes.
I'm not really even sure it belongs in south. South is really focused on, you know, waterfront type stuff.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
I, I don't, I don't see that being a great fit for the way we've, um, designed the south district to work, but I do think east and maybe more. I don't know.
Yeah, so special land use in east and north?
For me, yeah.
Anybody?
Sounds good.
Yeah?
Uh, I move we allow domestic and business repair establishments as a special land use in Water Street East and North districts. And not in any other district.
Second.
Any discussion?
I second.
Cindy? Yeah, wait, I do have a question. What, I, I do have a question. Um, where does it exclude, like, we, we talked about that it excludes auto or motorized vehicles?
It's in the definition.
On page nine of the, um, ordinance.
Page nine, okay.
Or, uh, chapter 154.
Uh, 022.
Okay, I mean, but it specifies, uh, yeah, I, I just don't have it in front of me right now, so.
I, I can read it again.
I think I'm looking at a, uh, an old meeting document.
I can read it again, the definition. A building or portion of a building occupied by an establishment in which a person or persons repair and or restore equipment or similar items which are not intended for resale on the premises. Domestic and business repair establishments shall not include the repair of automobile or motorized vehicles.
Okay. So that would include motorcycles?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Cause that could get quite loud.
Yep. Okay, I'm good, thanks.
McCallum?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
La- Casper?
Yes.
Lassity?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I think that's the end of our discussion items unless there's, uh, anybody who thinks we should question another use, or if we're missing any uses that we might want to add. I really kind of thought about that for a while, and I didn't think of any.
Uh, I did, I was kind of curious about the rental of ADUs right there under restaurants, that it was not even permitted in, uh, those three districts. Is, is there a reason why?
The reason I understand that was not permitted, and there was a lot of restrictions on rental of ADUs is because there was concern about turning a property that was zoned for single family use into, um, a duplex type situation by long, with long-term renting. So and out of an abundance of caution when they first created ADUs, cause there was a lot of discussion about whether or not they were going to allow them at all, and then whether or not they were going to allow them to be used for long-term rentals.
I could see not wanting congestion in those districts.
They're also not, um, in the, in the sense of vibrant retail establishments that would draw people to Sagatuck.
Right.
They're not fills or they're not land shark or whatever.
The only, the only area I was thinking of them is Water Street East, because it's trying to blend residential with, uh, less intense commercial, and I just wasn't sure, uh, some of those, you know. I, I, I just didn't know if there'd ever be a future opportunity to put an ADU on one of those spots and make it a short-term rental, so I guess.
Short-term rentals are allowed in all of the zone districts, they're just not the rental, the long-term rental.
Okay. So I guess it just seems confusing to me why it says rental of ADUs, because we actually, we have an ADU that is a short-term rental?
Yes.
Okay, so does this need a better description so we're not confused about that it's just long-term ADU rental, or?
Well, there's, there's a little confusion about that, um, because they just didn't, it was really more targeted toward the residential zone districts, that they didn't want a single-family house turning into a two-family house when it was zoned for single-family only. ADUs are allowed, excuse me, short-term rentals are allowed there. And there's difference between short-term rental and rental. And that's, that's probably the confusing part.
So when it says, uh, the, the rental of ADUs, it's just assumed that it only means long-term?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else see anything you wanna, uh, dive into that's on the chart that we haven't yet?
No?
I'm assuming the reason for the not permitted for all the parks in three of those four zoning areas is to keep the properties on the tax roll or to avoid another rose garden.
Mm-hmm.
Nightmare.
Well, I think, I think we've done a lot of work just cleaning up some of the extraneous things and maybe the guidelines a little, um, better defined. Cindy, how do you want us to proceed now? Is there anything else on this chart you'd like us to pay attention to?
This is really hard with two documents. It's the first time I've done it. No, I think that all I have to do is convert your motions into the, um, red line document, get it to the attorney's office, and go from there. Um, the council did deal with businesses at their last Monday meeting. They did amend your recommendation a little bit and changed two items. One was to allow businesses in Water Street East as a special land use and prohibit them in Water Street South. And a question that's been burning for several months now is about the arcade in the mermaid. The owner came in today to apply for a pop-up patio, and he said that arcade has been ripped out and it's converted into seating for the, um, rib place.
Ooh, really?
Mm-hmm. So it's been changed to a different use, loses its non-performing status and can't go back.
And the business thing you referred to just a little bit ago is actually the business and professional offices, right?
Yes, professional offices, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I thought we talked about allowing amusement arcades.
Amusement arcade is amusement.
I just noticed it's not permitted in any of the districts. I thought last time when we talked about the one in mermaid, we all said, what's the problem with having an arcade? Why is that a bad thing? Wouldn't that be good for kids, et cetera? Am I the only one who remembers that?
We did talk about it, I remember that.
I guess I can't think of a good reason not to allow such a thing.
Amusement arcade, any place of business or establishment containing four or more coin-operated amusement devices.
Yeah, why not allow that in like Water Street South? Or even east?
Let's see if I can get my chart back.
Do you think south is a good, is a good place, given that it's trying to promote such waterfront type of appeal, and that's a completely indoor sort of event?
How far north does south go?
Well, you could, I mean, you could make the argument that first floor of Coral, Coral Gables, the amount of space they have there.
Sure.
It could easily go in there and not change, I mean, leave what's there there.
Yep.
And where is mermaid? Is mermaid in south?
Yes.
I mean, that's, seems like an appropriate building to have an arcade, to me, I don't know.
I don't just, I don't dislike the idea of having one in town, I, I, you know, I think we're just going to have to be very creative as retail changes and we get to this crazy summer with this virus and the businesses that are struggling to just.
The easy, the easy answer is special land use for, for that.
Yeah, we have some concern about it, I mean.
Or yeah, if neighbors are worried about whatever, I mean, they could come in and talk and.
So are we just not Water Street North or not city center, but east and south? Is that what we're saying, as a special land use, or? Could be broader than that?
I don't know if I can think of a good reason to leave it out of city center.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, I mean, it's an entertainment facility.
Anybody? What do you think? Arcade on, uh, on the boulevard?
Yeah, I, I mean, again, to your earlier point, you know, with clothing stores emptied and all the rest of it, you know, that is certainly one potential new business to fill the gap.
I, you know, I'll tell you the one thing, I was an arcade junkie as a kid, uh, and I, the only thing I would, I would caution about is that would potentially be a gathering place of a bunch of kids without parental supervision. Uh, I know that from experience, and so I, it just, does that bother anybody? I mean, does that negate the benefits of it if, if, if it, or it materialize like that?
Yes, since you used to be a, a customer, did it, does it bother you to think about it now?
And look how well you turned out.
Yeah.
What could go wrong? Um, no, it, it doesn't, for me, I guess, you know, there are times when, you know, you have images of swarms and swarms of, of crazy teenagers, you know, out to, you know, have a fun night and, and they're all in one smallish space playing arcades and there's no parents to be seen. And we don't, do we have another place like that in town? I mean, have we?
They're all on their phones now.
I was gonna say, there's a, there's an arcade on every one of their phones. There, I can't think of, other than like a big laser tag operation or that place up in Holland that does bowling and everything else. I, the whole small arcade that you're talking about, I'm sorry, died when you became like 22 or something.
I'll tell you what though, at Bay, like at the place in Holland, the bowling place, the arcade is huge.
Oh, no, I know, but that's okay. I don't, I don't think you could run one in a storefront in Sagatuck and draw very many people in.
Probably not, but I don't know why we would. And, you know, stop someone from doing it.
I still think special land use for those, maybe all three of those areas is fine by me.
Yeah, I think to Dan's point and Stephanie, maybe a special land use does make sense. We could talk about hours, we could talk about.
Yeah, hours of operation and.
How many kids are allowed in at a time?
Neighbors on both sides, it's a chance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can think one of the most, uh, important things you would, uh, specify on a special end use is having an employee on site at all time. That's not like a serve yourself sort of.
Right.
Given the target audience, I agree.
Okay, so are we leaning towards having the arcades available in all but north? Is that what you're saying? Or all of them?
All but north sounds good to me.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah. That makes sense. And that would, and by definition, it, that would be four or more. So I guess in the north, you know, like if Retro Boats wanted to throw in two.
Right.
Two machines, they could, or two games.
Don't worry, they'll come in if they've got an issue.
That would be not a primary, right? And Cindy, they could do that.
Accessory.
It's an accessory, yeah, okay, so, uh, so all but, uh, Water Street North, we'd be making it a special one. Does, does anyone wanna make a motion for that?
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion that we allow, uh, as special land use amusement arcades in city center, Water Street East and Water Street South.
Second.
Any discussion?
Right here, I'm not crazy about that.
Okay, can you tell us what you're thinking on that?
Um, well, a lot of it might depend on hours of operation. Uh, there was a time a few, a few years back now, uh, that there was gang activity, I mean, reported gang activity downtown, uh, round, was reported around Coral. Around, was reported around Coral Gables, around Marrows. Just, that's why I'm just, I say literally, I'm not crazy about it. I'm not, you know, I mean, know if that's enough of a concern to rule it out.
Anybody else have a thought on that?
Well, there again, as some, as somebody else had mentioned, in the process of looking at a special end unit, use, a usage allowance for this, you get a chance on hours, you could restrict hours, you could, you could probably restrict the number of machines depending on the density of the place. So I, you could talk to the owners and gauge what they're up to. I think you'd have enough of a opportunity to get a read on where it would potentially head.
Yep. And I think hours of operation would be an important one for that, especially if you're talking about, you know, that sort of activity. The later it gets at night, the more that becomes an attractive proposition for those wanting to do it. So have control over hours too on the special.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, are we ready for a vote? Do we have any more discussion? All right.
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Ben Meter?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
Blasity?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I ask you a question about, uh, are, are, you sent a page in here that had the four different descriptions, the generally of each of the descriptions to, of the districts. On Water Street East, the very, and we talked, I think we talked about this in an earlier meeting, the very last sentence, the district will also promote visual access to the Kalamazoo River and Lake, but it's on the east side of Water Street. Is, is that something we should strike? Was it in there for a reason? Is that something we have to do at a different time?
Hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the, the Viewshed across the street from Water Street East is, is pretty already.
I think that's another one of those tail end things that got caught up in the, the splitting up of the zone districts.
Can we talk about it? I mean, is it something we should hash out or should we just leave it?
I don't, yeah, I think we should strike it probably if it's on the east side, like you say.
What do you guys think? Is there some reason why promote visual access to the Kalamazoo River and Lake should remain in the Water Street East, knowing, knowing what sits across from it?
My guess would be it was just a holdover from when we split those districts.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you do have Wicks Park in front of, you know, that whole north end of Water Street East, so.
I don't see that it hurts to leave that in. There's a great deal of sensitivity. I'm pretty sure if Chris Peterson was here, you'd hear about it. For anything affecting that River Viewshed. To your, to your point, people do sit, myself included, in Wicks Park and, and just literally enjoy how pretty it is to look. You know, James Brandis painted that. I have the painting in the house for a copy of it. So, you know, I, I, same thing with going farther up to, like where Retro Boats is. It isn't so much you want them to do anything positively, but you don't want them to do anything that could conceivably be negative. And it's pretty harmless kind of a statement, I think. Not overly restrictive or onerous.
It could serve a purpose in a specific, maybe unique scenario where we might want it to remain. What you're saying?
Yeah.
Give us the freedom to have that in there as a guiding principle if the right scenario were to be presented. What do you guys think?
That's fine.
I agree.
Could it, just a wild, wild thought here, could it mean building up like five or six stories?
I guess.
So you could have visual access across.
Oh. I hope it's understood that's not what we mean.
We do have height limits, so.
Okay.
All right, so the, I, you guys have, uh, you've answered my question adequately. We'll just leave it in there unless someone really feels strongly, we should take it out. All right. All right, so is that, are we done with the chart, Cindy? Do you see anything?
We're done with the chart. There's a few, there's a few little, um, items in the Red Line document. I don't know if you can, if it's too small to read, but residential uses and business and professional offices are encouraged on the second and third floors, buildings in the district for city central. Rather than just encourage, um, the, the, um, short-term rentals, it would include the professional offices are encouraged. And then there's some spelling corrections, some really minor spelling corrections.
Changing of motion picture facility to theater.
Theater, moving restaurants to special land use. But the rest of the items in the Red Line document are just completely minor and no, don't have any special problems, so.
Okay.
We need to make a motion then to approve all of them?
You should make a motion to approve the Red Line document with the exception of those that you moved on separately. Cause I will need to change some things, but, um, but I really want you to approve the spelling changes and the adding the second and third floor to being encouraged in the city central.
You wanna make a motion on that?
I move, we approve the Red Line document from June 25th, 2020. Uh, with the exception of any changes that contradict what we've discussed this evening, something like that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
McCallum?
Yes.
Blasity?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Casper?
You're muted, Marshall.
Yes.
Thank you. And Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, uh, does it look like there's any new business that's on the agenda? Is that true, Cindy?
That's true.
And any communications?
No communications received.
Reports of officers and committees?
Nope.
All right, so we are on addendum number nine, public comments. We'll open the public comments. A minute to three minutes, state your name and where you live. Do we have anybody? Okay, having no comments, we'll close the public comment portion. Any final thoughts anyone has? Cindy, anything you wanna wrap up? You wanna talk about, uh, appointments or vacancies or?
We do have vacancies available. But I think we just have the one, well, no, we have some terms expiring. So if you want, if your term is expiring and you want to be reappointed, you'd need to let me know and fill out the application. And I think I already got both of those back, but we have to, I think that's all we have, just the ones that are expiring.
Okay, all right. Any comments from anybody on the commission before we adjourn?
Some time ago, we talked about revisiting our, whatever, rules, regulations, so forth, related to long or short-term rentals and their use and so on and so forth. And I know that's a hornet's nest for, for owners to a certain extent, for the realtors to a big extent. But I've had comments made to me that, you know, everything from just noise related or who do I call and, and what have you, to and not, and I'm not sure what you do about this latter one, or if you can do anything about it, because it gets to a property rights, owners' rights issue. But the simple notion that residential properties in Sagatuck are now 75% not owner occupied. And that reality changes this, the character of the city. I mean, it creates its own character and effectively creates a character that for like a number of months, seven, eight or nine, has this town being a ghost town. You know, the schools worry about getting more kids. You don't get more kids that way. I mean, so it's, I, I just wonder if it's an area we can, I don't have, I'm not laden with any number of solutions and I'm, I'm not carrying water for any particular idea. And I know in the past, I think we've tried to address this and not gotten a lot of public input on it. But on both, on both, on the latter score, maybe as a general topic, on the former score, I do think there are, I know, I, I think there are things we ought to consider that are not onerous, but are purposeful for regulations that do not now exist for short-term rentals, the least of which to me is some sort of signage, for lack of a better term, that identifies those places when they're in the hands of a short-term renter, so that neighbors know who to call. And I, yes, I know there's stuff on file at City Hall where they have to say that the people are within X number, you know, so there's somebody within a radius of whatever it is, 15 miles from here. But when it's, you know, 2:00 AM Saturday morning or, or 11 o'clock Friday night and the fireworks are going off or the, you know, the, the drunks are falling over the fence in the backyard, that ain't a lot of help. So, I don't know, I, again, I'll shut up.
An objection we've had to that in the past is, whoops, I'm unmuted. Um, one objection we've had to that in the past is a safety issue that you're putting a sign out in front of the house saying, no one lives here sometimes. My other issue, it's interesting you would say this because last night, there was, I assume it was a rental since it was Wednesday night, people were outside really loud, they had really loud music. I was laying in bed, trying to sleep. I guess if I was gonna go to the house to find the phone number, I would just knock on the door. And I tend to not want to get out of bed, so I'm just gonna call the police if I'm that worried about it. I mean, now the next day, I could have walked up to the house and found the phone number and called to complain to the honors. And I agree, it's a, not a great system when you have to call City Hall.
The, the answer to that question is for noise and fireworks and drunks is for calling the non-emergency or the emergency 911 number. And the, the sheriffs are available 24/7. And that information that's filed at City Hall is also filed with the fire department. And they do have that contact information and they can respond. Especially for overcrowding, they're, they're the ones to call.
Again, I just, you know, I, I don't know, I, I'm fine to be in the minority and, and I'll happily shut up on this. I just wonder if it's purposeful to take a look at what the restrictions are, quite honestly, what you down to and including what the fee is. Just to look, let's take a look, let's see, I mean, you know, let's do our own due diligence the way we would do on a special land use permit. Looking at the whole subject, since the whole subject is a, is of concern to literally every private landowner in the, in the, in the, in the city. Regardless which side, whether you live there or whether you don't live there, may have two different opinions, but it's an area that has interested them all, for one reason or another, so.
I, I would personally like that because, uh, for those of us who aren't short-term rental owners, it would be nice to get a primer from Cindy about the nuts and bolts of that from the beginning to the end. If you buy a property that you intend to make a, a short-term rental, what is the process they go through? What is the permitting, uh, process, the restrictions and, and then, you know, so we kind of understand how that works. That'd be a good beginning. Is that what you're trying to say, Dan? Just kind of get, get on the same page about what it is we do with, how do we manage a short-term rental market?
And I think as a planning commission, it might even be purposeful to look at the economics of it so that we can determine maybe whether policies and procedures in place now encourage short-term rentals or discourage short-term rentals. Are they, are they heavy on one side or are they heavy on the other side? Reality is, they should be somewhere down the middle. We certainly shouldn't have such lenient requirements to include whatever escrows, fees and whatever. So lenient that we make it incredibly attractive because of the, the, uh, the revenue potential and, and the relatively low cost of, of entry. So again, I don't have the answers and I don't, believe me, I don't have a, uh, I don't, I don't have a going in notion, I, but I'd like to, when people ask or talk about it, I'd like to be able to say that at least, you know, these seven good people took a look at this, took a hard look at this and, you know, either threw up their hands and said, we can't do anything, or, or did this or did that, but that we all, as a planning commission, that seems like a reasonable char, charge for us to, to investigate.
Just say a couple of things. One, the planning commission did take a really hard look at this for, I don't know, two, three years or however long it was, so, and I, but I appreciate that it wasn't this planning commission and you all, you know, may have questions or wanna get up to speed on it. Two, um, I would just be a little sensitive to doing this right now, given the economy and how everything's in flux. I would not want to appear insensitive to homeowners and folks who own rentals and say, we're gonna pull the rug out from under, you know, your economic situation right now. It's, it seems like an odd time to look at it and, and kind of be taking a hard line stance on.
And, and honestly, kid, I'm not suggesting timing or anything.
Yeah, I'm just throwing that out there.
And I hear you, I hear you completely and you'd probably, looking at it now, would probably expose us to that.
Yeah.
And a critique.
Yeah.
There is one thing that I would like to say about short-term rentals that I have trouble with that is getting the people to register and to re-register when their, um, certificates expire. There is no penalty for that and there needs to be a, a, a pretty hefty penalty for not registering. So we don't,
Yeah.
we don't have any contact information on those people. And it seems to be just a handful that continue to not register and just blowing me off.
So Cindy, you're saying you contact them and then they just don't follow up? It's not if you just, they really don't know. Yeah, that, they should be shut down.
Well, as a, as a, as a simple matter, then you could, you know, leave a longer, a broader consideration to later, but address that immediately. I mean, set the number.
I'm not addressing anything immediately.
As an, as an ordinance, change the fees, change the, change.
Yeah.
You know.
Right.
Yeah, that's really not a planning commission thing. I just thought I'd point that out. I want to have a, a better enforcement tool for that. And I have two things that I've had in the works for just over a year. And one is the incredibly large penalty for not registering after I talked to you once. And a sticker that goes on the door that says, this house is not fit for human habitation because it's not inspected. And put this, it worked in Holland.
Yeah. Or for sure to say, this has not been safety certified for, yeah, guests.
Interesting.
So those are my two cents about that.
Is that a council thing?
Yep. And maybe after the elections or after we hire a real clerk, I can start putting it together, but it always seems to keep falling to the bottom of the pile.
Yeah, but then, as we said back when we put the whole ordinance together in the first place, there's gonna be a fire and a rental and it's not gonna look great for Sagatuck.
Right.
Any other comments?
I keep hearing about these, from what Dan was saying, it's kind of behavioral things. You know, every time I, I hear a Sagatuck or Douglas about rentals, well, you know, what's the problem with rentals? you know, what's the problem with rentals? Well, it always seems to come up, it's a behavioral thing among the tenants where, you know, the 2:00 AM parties and the et cetera, et cetera, and the too many cars, and obviously, this has sort of been addressed, but yet, if the only remedy is to call the police, you know, maybe we haven't done enough at trying to get some type of a procedure that's to be followed, or to somehow address this on a more systemic basis. I do see that.
I did talk to the fire department about it, and they want the resident to call the 911 number, so they can talk to that person and find out exactly what the problem is. They don't want the person to call me and then I call the fire department.
Then the fire department's going to have to be authorized to have cars towed away, or demand action at that moment?
And they have done that.
Uh huh, well.
One of the things I wanted to know, and I don't know the answer to this, and Kate, maybe it is from not being part of the group when it was originally set up, but I'd like to see what the city requires rental agents or owners to give to those people. And I'd like, quite honestly, I'd personally, I'd be thrilled to be given the chance to contribute to writing that, because I think creating that document in a way that says, without being mean or anything of the kind, you know, we're a tourist destination, we recognize people come here to have fun. We are also a small town with children asleep, and, you know, so that people understand, because I'm afraid, some part, some measure of the short-term rentals, the ones that, the kind of thing that Rich was just describing, are young, hell-raising people who come here to do just that. I mean, they probably don't act like that when they're at home.
They can't afford, those folks don't come here, I mean, generally, don't.
No, but some measure, I don't mean, I'm not talking about motorcycle gangs, I'm just talking about people who want to have a nice, loud, kick-ass party, not illegal, just louder than they would have wherever they live permanently with next-door neighbors and whatever, and.
Dan, I think you're talking, I think you're talking about the group that was across the street from me this weekend.
I think you're talking about my permanent neighbors.
They were all, they were all in their mid-20s, they were from Chicago, and they were here to party. And they, you could hear them. Fortunately, it didn't go on past about 11 o'clock, they shut it down.
Well, and that's our noise ordinance. That's our noise, that's our noise ordinance. I mean, you really can't, I don't think you'd have any leg to stand on to shut them down before 11, would you, Cindy?
No, no, and the fact that they did shut down was fine.
Yeah.
But I've got people in my neighborhood who know that I'm on this commission, and they're asking me, "Well, what are the policies?" "How long has it been since the city's really looked at this? This town is turning into a rental property." And when they say that, they're being critical. I agree with you, Dad. I think the whole issue needs to be carefully, and maybe quietly, at least at this point, we just need to start doing a deep dive into it.
I can tell you that I have about 200 registered short-term rentals. So there's probably, I don't know, 50 more that aren't registered. And there's about 1,300 residential parcels in the city. So, in addition to short-term rentals, taking up some of that non-owner-occupied business, there are people that have second homes.
Yeah.
That's not their primary residence. So saying 75% are rentals, I just can't quite get to that number with my data.
Well, I wouldn't say rentals, they're non-TRE, so.
Yeah.
Which is, it's always been that way. I mean, I don't know, I've been here 30 years, it's, there've always been, it always seemed like at least 50% part-timers. I don't know, that's just been my experience. Also, the short-term rental application packet is on the website, the city website, under online forums, if any of you want to look at that, you were asking what the process is.
Right, thank you.
So that would give you something.
Thank you.
Cindy, what were those numbers again, though, for the?
The short-term rentals, I'm confident, there's about 200, it changes every day, that are registered. And probably, I'm guessing, 50 more that aren't registered, and that is a total guess, but.
How do you, but it's impossible to really know, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, you can, but you can't look online, you can look at VRBO and Airbnb, and if you.
I've spent quite a bit of time doing that, and I'm not going to have any time this summer.
I'm guessing you're right, that would be my guess, being on VRBO, that it's probably 250.
I mean, there are.
In the city ones, at the most.
Maybe my last comment on this, but I know, for example, that there are third-party companies that offer cities, like Key West is one, I think Santa Barbara is another, offer to run that aspect for a substantial amount of what you would take in. But they run it, and I'm going off of, this is secondhand information, reading off of a website a year ago or longer, but also hearing from a friend who has rental property in Key West, and said, "That fixed it." That fixed it.
That would fix the unregistered, it does not fix the ones that are not compliant. They don't do any enforcement. I had a Zoom meeting with them about two months ago. They will take a phone call and they will report it back to the city for follow-up. They don't, they don't do any of their own enforcement.
Well, they probably can't, can't they?
No, they're not police officers, so they really can't do much. They can just report it, that there's been a complaint about this property at this address, and this is what the complaint was. And it's very, very expensive. Even just the monitoring of what's not registered, I found that to be pretty unworkable. They have some kind of algorithms that they run on the websites, like VRBO and Airbnb, and they find all your unregistered. And you have to provide them with your database of what you have registered, and then they can compare it. I talked about it extensively in the township with Griffin, the township manager, and he kind of agreed to me for that price. You might as well have your clerk on her slow, non-election season troll through the VRBOs and the Airbnb. And we've done that, you know, in the dead of winter, when things are not quite so busy. Monica spent a couple of days doing it for me, and she found about maybe 15, 16 that weren't registered. So it's not that you can't do it, you just need some time to do it, and I thought those fees were absolutely outrageous.
Is the city getting a lot of complaints about short-term rentals?
Only the ones that are not registered. I'm not getting any complaints about any other ones, except I did feel the complaint from Mike Minster about a property, and without an address, I can't tell if it's registered, I can't tell.
I'm sure.
I don't, can't tell anything about it, so I really got to have an address. And they really, really need to take care of calling the sheriff, especially at night and on the weekends. I'm sorry, if you call me at 2:00 in the morning, I am not going to go out there and look, look at a bunch of drunks and confront them with my clipboard.
Cindy, no one's ever going to ask you to do that, are they?
I hope not, but that's why, that's why it's important that the neighbors call the police or the sheriff, so they can be addressed, and that's the way they learn.
Yeah, what I don't understand, tell me, the, tell me about how the fire department has injected themselves into this.
The fire department does the inspections of the rental property. So they have a copy of all the documents that I have, that they keep. And when they do the inspection, they determine what the maximum occupant load is, and that's recorded here and there. So if we get a call, or if they get a call that says, "There's 12 people living in this two-studio apartment", they can go out at the moment and take care of it, and address it, and say, "You got till 8:00 in the morning to move out."
Yeah, okay, I understand.
So that's how people learn.
The other thing that I think is, it'd be nice if there was a way, maybe there is, maybe there isn't, to let the wider, give wider audience when that happens. And, I mean, so that, it used to be like a police blotter or whatever that were running the newspaper. People being able to see that this house is over and over and over, you know, but the reality is, no one knows. I mean, you may know, but no one else knows, and.
But what would we do with that information? If the public knew that, would we run them out on the rail, or what?
No, but I think it would give the public the ability to know they've got a problem issue in their neighborhood and exert, I mean, the greatest pressure that I've seen work is when neighbor, you know, when a neighbor goes over and raises hell.
Well, I think they'll do that if they see the problem. I don't know if it needs to be published. Anyway, I mean, we have a process, right? Isn't it three strikes and you're out, Cindy?
We do not have that.
Yeah, that's my problem. I don't think there's any, I don't think, you know, I don't think there's really teeth anywhere in this thing. Even to include the, what is the fire, and I'd say this, I'm on the fireboard. The inspection is a ridiculously small amount, in my view. I mean, it's 100, 200 bucks, something like that. On a place that's renting for, pick a number, $3,000 a week, or whatever they go for.
Yeah, it's 250.
And that's only every two years or something.
Every three years.
Three years. So it's like, for a renter, for an owner of rental property, it's nothing.
That council would ultimately define for you, Cindy, or are any of these in our lap?
I can't hear you very well.
Are any of these issues, issues that would be in our lap, or are these issues that all council would be defining for you?
Well, if we're going to change any part of the zoning ordinance, it goes through you. If you're going to change any part of the fee schedule, it goes through council.
So a lot of what we're talking about right now really isn't in our lap.
Right.
A lot of it, it sounds like, I mean, it's enforcement.
Yep.
All right, well, all good discussion. Do we need to wrap this up? Is there anybody wanting to share any other?
I don't want to make any noise.
No, it's not that sensitive.
Somebody's, somebody's.
Richard asked. Sorry.
Oh, no problem.
Sorry about that. Always causing trouble, even electronically.
That darn mute function. Okay, so are we, are we ready to adjourn? Does anyone have any last comments?
Ready to go.
Okay, well, and then we will adjourn this June 25th.
Do you have to vote for adjournment?
Oh.
Yes, we do, and I'm not sure, but maybe Kate has a comment.
Okay, this is my last meeting on the Sagatuck Planning Commission. I know. I, it's time. It's time. I, my term is up, and rather than re-up for another three years, I thought it was time to wrap it up. I've been thinking about it for quite a while, so it seemed like as good a time as any.
You're institutional knowledge-based.
I know.
I am an institution, which is why I felt like.
We're all, let's be honest, we're all institutions, but you have, you have the institutional memory that.
I think I probably can still email her if I need to.
I think so.
Well, I learned a lot from you, Kate, in the three years that I've been on. I watched you, and I was always so impressed with your knowledge and and just your attention to detail. You were very studious every time we had a meeting, so I appreciate everything that I've learned from you in my first few years here on this.
I remember watching you, Kate, long before, even long before I was ever a planning commissioner or anything else, when you guys were sitting, I think, on the stage, I think at the Center for the Arts, maybe it was a high school, I can't remember, about reviewing dune grass. Doing the snail-o'-the-clamps and whatever. But you were great on that, and that was a, that was a tough.
That was a pressure cooker.
That was a tough meeting, tough.
I don't know how people do it in the township with the, with everything they have to do. No, thanks.
We will miss you, absolutely.
I will miss all of you too, but I'll, I'll pop in and watch the Zoom meetings.
Good, because we had nobody else watching it.
Even Mike won't show his face here, for God's sake.
I've got a computer glitch problem, which I'm going to solve with a new computer, so I will, I will see you next time.
All right.
Well, and that's it.
I'd like to.
We adjourn, I'm sorry, Richard.
If I could add, just thank Kate for her service and her leadership.
Thank you, Rich.
We'll miss you, that's for sure.
I'll be around.
Well, we, if I thought we could, we'd try to talk you out of it, but.
No.
Okay.
All right, very good.
On that note, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Nobody's second, nobody's second.
Oh, God.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Ready? McPollan?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Van Meter?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Plastity?
Yes.
And Crawford?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Does this remind, does it remind anyone else of Hollywood Squares?
Yes.